All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I would like to call to order the December twentieth, twenty twenty-three Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting. Welcome, everyone. My name is Sheila Adam Stafford. I'm the Chair of this committee and the District Four Representative of the Prince George's County Board of Education. We will now have introductions of our committee members, followed by introductions of the administration staff, board office staff, and any other guests. I would like to welcome to the team Ms. Smith, and thank you for joining us tonight. So I'll turn it over to our committee members.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Dr. Kenneth Harris, Representative for the Seventh District and Vice Chair of OBAFA. Happy holidays. Thanks for being here today. I'll pass it over to Chair Mickens Murray.
Hi, thank you, Chair Adam Stafford. I'm Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Board, and also a member of the OBAFA Committee, and happy holidays.
Hi, colleagues. I'm Jocelyn Routh, a member of OBAFA. Happy to be here. Happy holidays to you all.
All right, we can go to the administration and staff.
Happy holidays, all. Sharaska Coleman, Chief Operating Officer.
Happy holidays, everyone. Jason Washington, Associate Superintendent of Supporting Services.
Oh, good afternoon and happy holidays. I'll show Winston, Director of Internal Audit.
Good afternoon, Lisa Howell, Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon, Kiba Baldwin, Director of Transportation.
Good evening, Pearl Harmon, Director of Human Resources, Operations, and Staffing.
Good evening, everyone. Curtis Eugene, Senior HR Partner, Essentially Managed Support Staffing. Seasonal greetings.
Hello, everyone. Siobhan Smith, Director of Budget and Management Services.
Annie's Ellis.
Administrative Secretary, Board Office.
Thank you all for being here this evening. Ms. Ellis, will you please call the roll? I think you're on mute.
Yes, thank you. Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. McInnes Murray.
Present.
Mrs. Routh. Mrs. Routh.
I'm sorry, I was having a problem. I'm muting. Present.
Ms. Rivera Forbes. We have a board.
All right. Thank you so much. May I have a motion to adopt the December twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda?
I moved to adopt the twenty twenty-three meeting agenda.
Second.
Agenda. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to adopt the December twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. The agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
Motion to adopt the November twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the, to approve the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion passes. The minutes are approved. Okay, today we have one registered speaker, one registered public comment this evening, and that would be from Mr. William Small, an individual. He can speak at this time if he's here.
Is he here?
One second, we're working on it.
Okay, and just, just some, oh, never mind.
Chair Adam Stafford, can you tell me what is the name of the person?
Mr. William Small.
He's not here. We only have someone from WJLA.
All right, so perhaps if they do come, we can circle back, but we're gonna keep going. Thank you. So we're gonna move down to items three point one, where we will be discussing safe passages and transportation updates. I'm going to yield the floor now to Dr. Sharaska Coleman, our Chief Operating Officer, to discuss safe passages. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you during your presentation. I'll also introduce Mr. Kiba, Kiba Baldwin, our Director of Transportation, to provide us an update on hiring, transportation hiring and payroll updates. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Board Member Sheila Adam Stafford, Ms. Stafford. If we could pull up the presentation, because we have a set of kind of comprehensive updates from our last meeting that we needed to make sure we reviewed with respect to operations. Yep, we can start at the top. Thank you so much. And again, Board Chair McInnes Murray, Committee Chair Adam Stafford, and members of the board, thank you so much for giving operations this opportunity to present in front of you this evening. Can we put it in present, presentation mode if that's all right? We wanted to take this opportunity to provide updates from our operations team, including our partners with Human Resources with respect to, and if we can go to the next slide. Can we go back? Is there another slide before that? I'm sorry. Yeah, we want to go back a little bit. There we go. Okay, thank you. So if we can go to the very next slide, we're now we're ready. All right, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Director Baldwin for our Transportation Department. He's going to begin with a payroll update. We know that from one of our previous meetings that there were some questions and concerns regarding the appropriate pay for some of our staff members, and so our task was to first follow up and provide information around what our findings were. So I'm gonna turn it over to Director Baldwin to provide that update.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Good evening, Board Members. Chair, we would like to provide just a couple of words about our payroll update, and if we can, advance to the next slide. In response to concerns raised by our transportation staff, a collaborative work group was formed consisting of members of our payroll office, IT department, human resources, and transportation. Over the past, over, over the last two pay periods, we have reviewed over twenty-two hundred payroll, or here eleven hundred payroll entries, cross-referencing standard hours versus scheduled hours to ensure consistency in staff payments. The initial review identified a small number of discrepancies which were promptly resolved. Our ongoing goal is to achieve a hundred percent accuracy in each pay period. Next slide, please. The images that you see here were developed by our communications team to showcase completed work on software updates and the alternative transportation initiatives. Sharing this information with stakeholders is crucial for transparency. As we focus on progress, I'll now hand this over to our HR partners for their updates.
Good evening, everyone. If we can move to the next slide. So as a continuation of the updates we've been providing at the meetings, from July first till now, we've continued and participated in twenty-two virtual in-person evening and weekend events. We continue to publicize the events on a variety of public medium. Our next recruiting events are actually scheduled after the winter break for Wednesday, January tenth, as well as when, Wednesday, January twenty-fourth. There had been a prior question as it relates to our in-person recruiting events, their accessibility. We did go back and we were able to confirm that ninety percent of our in-person and recruiting events do have accessibility to public transportation, and that's something that we are continuing and geared to make sure we continue to do to afford as many opportunities for individuals to attend the events in person as they possibly can, in addition to still continuing to have the virtual medium. If we can move forward, please. The next two slides are just representative of the data points we've shared before in terms of the different recruiting events, as what we've added to this bar, to this graph, is really the different locations, the different public, public transportation access that is available, and we can go to the next slide as well. And this is a continuation of the data. And if we go to the next slide. So this is just a summary of the information that is primarily captured in the previous slides. I did want to provide an update, a continuous update on the non-CDL van driver positions. We've held four different interview sessions for those positions. Ninety-eight individuals have applied, and of those seventy-seven candidates were selected for an interview, and forty-six actually were interviewed. Of those thirty-four of the candidates were selected and extended offers. Seventeen have accepted. And right now, we are going to be reposting that position once again. For the remaining eight, there's a total of twenty-five FTEs that are budgeted for this position. We anticipate by the end of January, early February, for all the vacancies to be filled based on the fulfillment of the most recent posting that we're gonna have. Again, this is a continuation of our ongoing efforts. We've had conducted three hundred and eighty-four job offers have been extended to individuals. We right now have sixty-one prospective trainees or candidates that are still pending for us in terms of responding back to the offers that we've sent out to them. And with, or with a lot of optimism, we're expecting them to return, and then those individuals primarily do not have their CDL or CDL learners, they will begin to participate in our CDL prep class so that once they obtain their endorsements, they can then transition into our bus driver training class at PGCPS. So those, that concludes all of the updates from Human Resources as it relates to recruitment and staffing.
Thank you, Curtis. We know that unfortunately, we've dealt with the death of several students in the last month. That was terribly unfortunate. So we have, we wanted to make certain that we gave an update around crossing guards and crossing guard requests. We know that crossing guards are under the exclusive control of the Prince George's County Police Department. We, however, do have a safety office that serves as a liaison to the police department and the school district so that we can make requests for crossing guards and try to prioritize them as we see fit. At last report, there were unfortunately a number of crossing guard vacancies that are, it's a substantial number, and we know that the county government is working to try to fill those posts as quickly as possible. Crossing guards are assigned their routes through a bid process, very similar to our bus drivers. So as they, as an employee looks to take on the role of a crossing guard, they will then look at what the available stops are that they, or intersections that they can support, and they actually select. And so that is a bid process that is utilized. When a guard is on leave, then there'll be notification made to those supervisors and through the police department and some of our municipal partners, they will work to try to fill those vacancies as they, as they are able. The safety office does have direct contact with the three crossing guard supervisors. Just a couple of other points as we talk about safe passage, and that's not just for our walkers, but also for our, our our bus riders. Our Transportation Department has driver trainers as well as transportation supervisors who are available to conduct assessments of bus stop safety. In the event we find a situation that could potentially be unsafe for children. In addition to that, they work alongside, transportation works alongside our safety office to conduct assessments of walk routes. So if a parent or if we feel that that walk route may be unsafe, maybe there aren't enough sufficient sidewalk availability, or it's a particular intersection that we deem to be a challenge for students, then we can certainly conduct a walk route assessment between transportation and the safety office and make recommendations around how to support that particular situation. So if we can move to capital programs.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I will be handling the, the capital programs update for today. We really want to provide an update on the, the status of William Worth Middle School replacement as well as New Glen Ridge Area Middle School. Both of these schools will be opening later in twenty twenty-four, as we begin the, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. And as we start, we'll start with William Worth first. Right now, the school is yes, Board Member, I mean, Adam Stafford, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. Before we went into CIP, I wanted to see if there were any questions from Board Members on that first component about the transportation and safe passage updates. Okay, thanks so much. If we can go back just a couple of slides, thank you so much. So I'm gonna yield to my colleagues. So I saw Chair McInnes Murray, I saw her hand up first, and then to Board Member Routh, and then I had a couple of questions. Thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you, Chair Adam Stafford. My question is, can we get a briefing from the police department to the full board? Can I put that on an agenda to talk to us about the crossing guards? And when they, when the request is made because the crossing guard is not showing up, they can help us to see how long, what that process is? Because do they call them in the morning? Is it ten o'clock? And I mean, is it six o'clock and then you get somebody there by six oh five? And then my next question is, what is the process? Where are they with trying to replace or hire the crossing guards that we need? And what is that number? Do you know that number of crossing guards that we need today? Anybody?
No, ma'am, I don't have that number, but we'll work with those partners to get that, to make that request.
Okay, I think if you could get us a briefing, I mean, get someone from the police department to come and, and speak to us because you have made it clear that it is their responsibility. And if it's their responsibility, they should be able to speak to it at a board meeting with us. So I would appreciate that, and I think that takes care of all of my questions, Chair Adam Stafford. Thank you.
Hey, Board Member Routh.
Thank you so much, Chair Adam Stafford and staff for making this, Dr. Coleman, just this presentation. So my question is, within our school system, I know you said the safety office acts as a liaison, but can you tell me the planning that takes place with every school as it relates to safe passage?
So I would defer to the safety office to go into the everyday plan, and, and when you're talking about safe passage, are you talking about with respect to walk routes? Are you referencing school bus stops? Are you referencing all of the above? Because there's multiple components to make sure that students who get to school different, in different ways are safe in their passage to and from.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So no, I'm asking for all safe passage issues and concerns. So in other jurisdictions, I'm learning that there are plans that are put in place. So I just wanted to know what kind of planning do we do here that will inform my policy choices and advocacy? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I had just a couple of questions. First, first I had a comment. I just wanted to say I'm really, really happy to see what this team has done in terms of communication and transparency around transportation from, you know, where we started in August to those slides that you showed us earlier. Is there a way for us to go back to Mr. Baldwin's presentation? Because I think this is what we really asked for. This right here, I would just want to say thank you. I think that this was, this is something that I think parents will really appreciate, and so I wanted to know, has this gone out to parents right now, or?
It's in the works.
Oh, great. When do you think we can expect to be able to share this out? Because I'd love to get it out to parents when, when it comes out.
I'm having to talk with our communications team and getting a date for them to be able to push this out through all of our, our media outlets.
Fantastic. This is going to be really great. So thank you for your work on this, and thank you all so much for putting together that work group around bus driver pay. That was like a real, just quick response that you all had there, and I'm just wondering, so you all will communicate the results of that work group to that, that union and the team that, that raised that issue?
And absolutely, that's ongoing. Cross, kind of cross-department team is inclusive of transportation, our information technology team, as well as our payroll department. And as the findings come out, they're also working with Mr. Morales to ensure that our union partners are updated with our progress.
Oh, great. Okay, and I just know the audit is, you know, we're going to be getting some reports on the, are you all going to bring that to the board as a full board, or will we be bringing that to OBAFA first, just as, just so that I can understand from the audit?
So I I think the best way to respond is we probably need to prepare a briefing. I wouldn't necessarily call it an audit as much as a briefing around some of the findings that we are having, because what we're doing is we're fixing issues in real time as opposed to waiting for an audit period to pass and then trying to address things, because we know the urgency around pay. That's something that has to be addressed right away, and I do want to stress that, you know, one of the things that we're most encouraged about are the number of instances of staff members whose pay has been impacted is really very small. I know that was said in the presentation, and by small, and correct me if I'm, I misspeak, Director Baldwin, but in the latest instance that we looked at, it was fewer than twenty that we were trying to address out of, you know, over eight hundred drivers. So I just want to reiterate that we're talking about small in scope, but certainly if any staff member's pay is not correct, we take that very seriously and are working to address it immediately.
And I think when I was talking about the results, I'm, I know that you all are getting some preliminary results from the audit, and I was just wondering, would, did you want to bring that here first or to the board? And you're saying you guys will prepare just a briefing of kind of where things stand from the audit, because things are in progress. I think I
I think
summarizing that.
Absolutely, and, and if, if you, if you see fit, if the board would like it, we can kind of go into some of the detail around some of our findings in OBAFA, and then you can elevate what needs to be elevated. Maybe that might be a way to, to proceed.
Okay, okay, great. And then just my last thing, and then I'll go over to Board Member Routh. I know we've talked about safe passage and security, and I was just wondering, I know we've had some issues that have happened in schools, especially in schools in my district recently around security, and I just wanted to know if you could just give us just a quick update on some of the things that the operations office is doing around security for students during this, during this time.
Well, Adam Stafford, thank you so much for that opportunity to provide an update. I think many of us are aware that we did have a very tumultuous day at Charles Flowers High School yesterday with a number of altercations between students, both on property and off property. So obviously, our number one priority as a school administration is the health and safety of our children and our staff. And so we take it extremely seriously when there's anything threatening that culture and climate that is, that is anything but nurturing for, for our students. So the area office in concert with the operations team actually mobilized yesterday to ensure that we developed a plan last night to address the situation in the morning. The area office team met with the principal last night, or excuse me, the lead administrator last night to review the plan, this, and also met with myself last night to review our plan from the operations side. In the morning, the area office, along with operations representatives and, and security services convened in the morning prior to school opening to ensure that we had our staff deployed in the proper locations. We had additional area office leadership members and personnel deployed to the school today and will be for the balance of this week. We increased the number of safety and security services personnel at Flowers today, and we will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. We are working in concert with our Prince George's County Police Department partners, where typically that school would have one school resource officer. We actually increased the number of school resource officers at that building to four, and we will do so until we deem it appropriate to draw down that staffing, again, in concert with our police partners. We also deployed our student services mental health team to the school because we want to make certain, you know, something like that, it can be traumatic for people and trigger people. And so we want to make certain that we are addressing the social emotional side of both staff and students. So that team was deployed onsite today, and announcements were made where any person who needed that support, they were able to take advantage of that service throughout the day today. So, you know, we, it's an all-hands-on-deck approach. It's not just operations. It's not just the area office. It's not just student services. It's all of us coordinating together to ensure that we are restoring a positive environment at Flowers High School.
And I, I just want to thank you for that update. I went today myself, just popped in in between meetings, and I can honestly say all, all that he is saying is happening. I mean, there was increased police presence, increased staff and security, and there were teachers that were taking advantage of the increased mental health support on campus. So I just want to say thank you to you all for really mobilizing, because, because like you said, there is so much restoration that does need to happen for those students and staff there. And so thank you, thank you so much for all that you all did today to get, you know, really wrap your arms around that community. I saw it with my own two eyes. I know our vice chair is here. If we could pull her over, Annie's, she is here as a panelist. I'm gonna go to Board Member Routh, and then to Chair McInnes Murray, and then we'll move on to capital improvement. Thank you all so much.
Thanks so much, Board Member and Chair Adam Stafford, and also Dr. Coleman. After hearing all of the unfortunate traumatic events yesterday, I immediately went into mommy mode. And there are other mothers that also identify with, you know, just wanting to have the best for their children. As we are all parents, you know, we just want the best for our children. I just would like to just make a recommendation that parents are often, are also afforded the same supportive mental health services because parents are concerned that their children may not come back home after seeing all of the things on the media and the social media outlets. So thank you so much for just considering my recommendation. I know there are a lot of Um I know there are a lot of parents who reached out um on to me today, just come with a lot of concern. So I want to go back to the transportation and I think that uh your newsletter um is awesome. And I can't wait um to get this in the hands of the 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 parents and the students that have. Um definitely uh shared their concerns. Um I just wanted to ask a follow up question. Um as it relates to operationalizing um the the suggestions that are coming. Uh from the audit directly as you're standing them up. Um is there like a chart or anything so that the board can understand as we are standing different items up? That there are um different different changes that are being made or just operationalize. This is a very sensitive subject um that is in our community with regard to transportation. And equally, I do appreciate this newsletter, but if we could have a a visioning session of how we would like to roll out the information. Um I'm sure that, you know, the superintendent um and his, your colleagues, his staff. Um and the board will be very supportive in rolling out the information timely as you receive it.
Thank you for that. Um and so um just to kind of kind of structure uh what's happening a little bit. These are immediate, what's represented in this document? Uh are those kind of immediate steps that our administration, the department knew they needed to take? That were within our control, uh whether we were in an audit, a third party audit or not. Uh right? So we knew that uh the opportunity to um, for example. Incorporate alternative transportation options for students was something that was right before us. We could do it. We had the funding to do it. And so we don't need an audit to tell us that that's the right thing to do for children. Um and so that's just an example or or our school messenger. We know we need to communicate in a more effective and efficient way with our families. And so we don't need an audit to tell us that we're going to go ahead and move forward and and try to package that and roll it out now. When I heard you say audit, I'm thinking about separately. The formative third party audit that we've been engaging in since the uh since August, September. That audit, the findings, we're going to start getting preliminary findings actually by Friday uh for internal review. Uh we've already had an internal kind of planning meeting as a as a um. Uh as a team around what to do with that information. We have to first scrub the data. Uh to make sure that what they are uh giving us as preliminary evidence and data is actually appropriate and correct. So there's some some kind of push pull around that. And then we use the month of January for internal. Um uh let's just say synthesis of the potential recommendations. The potential uh uh ramifications or impact of each of those recommendations. So that we can actually begin to develop some level of priority or understanding around. Uh what may be before us as levers of change. By the beginning of, we'll get the final report from uh formative. Cause that's an internal process between the transportation department and formative. By the end of January, January twenty ninth specifically, the final report from formative will be provided. So once we have that final report on January twenty ninth, our goal is to engage with the board first. Then our community around those findings and and move that in from kind of findings and recommendations. To a potential action plan. And so that is coming. Uh you're just a little bit ahead of. Uh where we are, but I appreciate the opportunity to kind of at least structure it for the community uh tonight.
I'm so appreciative of your, you know, just all of your staff's work as it relates to this issue. Um I know the advocacy advocacy came strong this school year. Um but you know, I am so PGCPS proud that we are working together. Could you please go back to the slide that um looks at all of the drivers, the non CDL drivers that were hired? I just wanted to see something. No, not this one, not this one. Yeet, wait. This one. So how how many vacancies are estimated left?
So we've been authorized to have, and I'm not going to speak for, I'll just say this and then I'll turn it over to HR. We have twenty five non CDL driver positions authorized. Uh but remember, we only have sixteen uh vans.
Vans.
Right? So so um Curtis, uh or Mr. Eugene, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but I just wanted to make sure we had that van piece in there.
But what is that? What what is the actual number uh before Mr. Eugene, before you respond? I just want to know the actual end that we, the number that we are looking at as it relates to FTEs that we have vans for. What's that universe?
Twenty five FTEs for non CDL drivers.
For the available vans, because you know, you said we only have sixteen. So is that sixteen slots or is it like eighteen? Like what is it?
Well, I'll, if we can hire twenty five, then I we would hire twenty five. Because even if they aren't driving a non CDL van, we can utilize them as a bus attendant.
Understood.
What point of information? I just, this line where it says a hundred and eight have accepted and sixty one are pending. That's just so that I'm clear, that's for CDL bus drivers.
So that is for the CDL bus driver position. That is correct. But again, when we say that they've accepted, these are candidates for the bus driver position. The vast majority of those individuals do not have their CDL. They they have to be hired and when they get their CDL learners, they're part of our training class. Uh but these are, they're interested in becoming a bus driver.
So the sixty one pending, they have, they have gone through the training class and they're ready to go.
They have not, no. These are individuals that have expressed an interest in becoming a school bus driver. And we're awaiting their responses as it relates to the paperwork so we can move forward in the hiring process for those individuals.
Okay, so just, I mean, o- overall though, if I if I'm just from a thirty thousand foot view. We needed two hundred s- slots roughly, I believe, at the beginning of the year. And we have a hundred and eight people that have accepted and have begun the the road to becoming a bus driver. Is that safe to say?
That is safe to say. Um it's a matter of actually, but it's. But the important thing I would add to that, it's a matter of them actually fulfilling the requirements for the position. Getting the CDL learners, which they have to do, and then completing the training.
But if so, but if we can say so since August, a hundred and eight people are now in the pipeline to become bus drivers. Is that, is that accurate to say?
Yes.
Okay, can we give this committee and this team and and Obi and Dr. Coleman and everyone around? That is great news. I mean, I think we need.
No, that's amazing news.
Fantastic.
Yeah, that's 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 amazing. Um I'm 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 elated to share this. We're about to, we're about to go on my socia's with all this. This is.
That is great news. I mean, because really that was in August that we were having two hundred people. And you can correct me on the number and just tell me if I'm getting getting over excited. I feel like this is an early Christmas gift for us. Because basically what you're saying is a hundred and eight people have accepted, they're in the pipeline. And once they complete the program, then they would be cleared to be bus drivers.
So it is reason, there there is reason to for the excitement and and we appreciate that as well. Uh but I also appreciate in terms of you asking the clarifying question. Because although they have accepted, those individuals still need to go through our hiring process. So although they may have accepted the offer. There may be a prohibitive reason why we're not able to hire them as a bus driver. Um or they may not be successful in getting their CDL learners, which will then allow us to transition them into a training class. But it is reason to be excitement in the pool that we're working with because they are in the pipeline as we're moving forward.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go over to Chair Chairman Kismari, and then we'll move.
Uh thank you so much. Um to the uh to the staff. Thank, you know, we don't spend a lot of time giving you kudos for that that you do. But what I appreciate tonight is not only the progress that you've made with the bus drivers. I also appreciate the the response that you gave to flowers. I I appreciate the fact that the superintendent talked to us this morning. Now this evening, you have given us some additional details. And now there's a a comfortable feeling, I believe, at least for myself. That you are handling it, that you are taking charge of it. And that you are managing it in a way that we should not realize any additional harm. At least that you guys can foresee in the future, in the um immediate future. And I also uh want to say to uh you, Mr. Uh Dr. Coleman, that. Everything you guys have done since, I believe, the beginning of the school year. You have made consistent progress. You've made consistent progress that we can see. And and even though you have some issues and I won't say issues, but these bus drivers need to complete some stuff. You are at least updating us in real time. So that we can have that information and we know, you know, we can work with that. What I would ask for safety issues with the flowers incident. Is there a way that you could notify board members? When the incident, when you become aware of that incident, and I don't care if it's twelve o'clock at night. That you let us know that you are aware of it and that you're working on it. You don't have to give us specifics of what you're doing about it because my phone was blowing off the hook this morning. And if the superintendent had not sent me some information, I would not have been able to deal with it this morning. But also the information was out last night because my husband was talking to me about what's going on at Flowers. He gets alerts. So all I am saying to you is, it's not that we're trying to interject ourselves. We just need information to help you because the more information that we have. The more we can mitigate the phone calls that come into you and superintendent. So if you could help with that, we'd appreciate it.
I definitely.
And and I'm open to any time of night because when it's serious, it's serious and we can be, you can wake us up.
So I I certainly understand that and thank you so much, Board Chair. You know, we all have a vested interest in our schools being successful. Um just personally, you know, this is my twenty eighth year in Prince George's County Public Schools and fourteen of them, I was a principal in three of our schools. And so the first thing I knew I was doing this morning was going to Flowers. And that's where I spent my morning at Flowers High School um because we were going to have a better day today, period. Um so so I definitely appreciate that and that is our commitment. Um and I will say this also, you know, the the social media um makes it a challenge to get ahead of information. Um and I just have to say that, um you know, the instant something happens that is sensational. People have their phone, they have the ability to shoot it out and and share it with with thousands and thousands of people. Even before we're able to get a grasp of the situation, right? We would, we can be in the middle of securing a situation, not even gotten to the investigation component. Just trying to secure safety of all involved. And it's already out on social media and people are are, you're now having to manage that component of it. And so I definitely appreciate the fact that we need to keep our board and our community informed. And that is our commitment to do it. Um it's just, I just want to make ma- in real, uh keeping it realistic. I just have to make sure that folks, that people recognize the fact that we cannot beat the speed of social media. And we have to, we have a lot more that we have to do so that when we send out information, it's accurate. It is, it is, it's it's what's actually happening.
A- and I understand that. So my ask is not how you're triaging it or what you're doing about it. My my ask is that you make us aware of it. And that you are aware of it.
Understood.
That's what we need to know. Because when it comes on the news and we don't know about it, and I'm not talking about social media. When it's on channel nine, channel seven, channel five, we should be able to sit and watch the news. Oh yeah, we know about that. Okay, they got it. It's under, it's, they're handling it. That's all we need to be able to say is that you're handling.
Agreed. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. And while the chair may say that you guys can call her at midnight, pl- please don't call me after seven. Okay, I have small children. I'm trying to stay asleep. All right, let's go ahead on to uh the CIP update. Thank you so much.
Um yeah, so we will um as mentioned before, uh provide an update on the construction progress of William Wirt and New Glen Ridge. Uh to date, uh William Wirt is eighty three percent complete, which uh leaves its. Uh target completion date uh late March, uh early April. Uh but of course, this is fluid depending on weather and other uh uh issues that may come up in the field. Um the uh as you can see, phase two um really, which is the school pad. Um they have here for uh May first. Uh we are working to to tighten it uh schedule up as much as we can. Um uh eight fifteen uh is really uh the proj- projected date. Phase three is uh the demolition of the old William Wirt. Um and uh phase four uh completion will be the completion of the fields. And a final parking lot for uh William Work. Um we are uh moving aggressively uh to uh um to get students in the building. Uh that's why it's uh to be determined uh only so that we can move forward as quickly as possible with uh phase three and four. Uh we would love to get uh all of William Work wrapped up uh next fall, if at all possible. So to give you an update on the uh financial impact and where we are are related to budget. Uh the total approved uh budget uh was eighty seven point five million dollars. Uh the total construction budget uh was seventy point one. Uh in that approved budget, we are also. Uh including um FF and E and any of the other supporting uh services costs associated with the project. Uh the original uh contract amount uh came in at sixty two point uh zero zero five million. And uh we've had to date uh one point three million in approved change orders. Uh which were focused more around unknown land conditions on the on the site. Uh so where we are right now um is uh coming in under roughly um. Uh what, six and a half million dollars under budget um uh for uh William Work uh middle school replacement. Here's a uh a a picture of of the uh center concourse within the school. Um and now with uh New Glen Ridge, uh which will also be welcoming and opening up uh this summer. Uh we are uh seventy eight percent complete uh with that school. Basically, what it means is that they are really focusing on the fit out inside of the school uh with finishes uh and. Um uh meal work, et cetera. Uh the predict uh projected data school uh substantial completion. We expect to receive the uh use and occupancy is uh July eleventh. Uh and we will be welcoming students in uh to both of these schools uh no later than uh next fall. Um similar to uh what we saw in in New Glen Ridge. Um and this was literally a product also of of the hard work of the Capital Programs Team. As well as these projects and were under contract pre-COVID. Uh so that uh these uh these contract awards uh were were placed and and put in place. Uh the total construction bu- budget uh was uh eighty million dollars. Um and uh the original contract award is seen here with sixty six point five. Uh nine uh point seven million in change orders. Uh this was uh due to a few things, uh specifically um the stormwater management requirements uh of this site. Uh it is, uh I don't know if you know much about um old European uh architecture and abbeys. But there is literally a ten foot high abbey um uh I guess, structure underneath this school. Uh for stormwater management. So you can walk under it. They have columns. Uh it is uh it is a uh intricate and very expensive system that's that was required uh for stormwater management. Additionally, uh we had to um change the bathrooms. Uh uh the game bathrooms to gender neutral. Uh and so uh that required a redesign. Um and finally, for uh unknown land conditions. And so these were, um and I I know this came up in a prior um Obafa meeting around. Um uh stormwater management requirements and DPI requirements. This is one where, you know, we are um at the mercy to move forward. Um is is having to comply with uh stormwater management changes and requirements. Uh as determined by DPI uh to receive uh our building permits. Um and so uh to that end, we are still uh tracking under uh the. Um, and so uh to that end, we are still uh tracking under uh the construction budget. Um, and so uh it's six seventy-six point three million dollars. Um, here's a uh a couple of uh pictures of the uh the current construction uh of the school. I will stop here because I'm also doing the update on the uh Blueprint Schools uh to see if there were are any questions uh on the uh the CIP construction progress of these two schools.
Board Member Rout.
Thanks so much, uh Board Member Adam Stafford. Um, just a a a tech, a technicality question, I couldn't say that word. Um, if you go back to the William Worth um screen, you said that the old William Worth is being demolished. So then would that be the site for the field that's coming? Oh, okay. I just wanted to understand.
So, so, yeah, it it's a phased project, so you, um, the same thing happened with um uh Walker Mill, uh knocking it down and then, uh, so construction, all construction activities at William Work will not be complete until, even though the new school is open and everybody is there, will not be complete until January uh uh twenty twenty-five.
Okay, um, and I just wanted to um just um acknowledge the fact that um, from what I see, that we have uh been fiscally, more than fiscally responsible, um, just to make sure that we are watching the change orders. I know that was a huge thing this school year where we were looking at these change orders, but understanding storm management and all of the uh different environmental factors that are currently taking place. Um, that's pretty important to ensure um that we uh that we keep this great facility. Um, I just want to just sing your praise, your your team's praises, Mr. Washington. Um, just for uh this update, uh, uh, very grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And just my question is around um working with Deepi. I mean, I'm hoping that um next year, we can have a meeting agenda item in it needs, if you can note this, where we talk about stormwater management and its impact on school construction in our county. Um, because I'd like to invite someone from Deepi and Mr. Washington. Maybe you can uh direct us to someone who you think would be a good person for us to connect with so that we can just better understand, you know, do we need to have? I know that you all meet with them frequently. Um, I know that you all work together on this fast-tracking for P three schools. I'm just trying to see what are some of the best practices around, you know, permitting and um stormwater management that can just help us to be even more efficient, right? And to help us to, you know, ensure that we're not, you know, dealing with some of these uh challenges that we face as we build schools. Because as you all have mentioned, I mean, like, these are very necessary environmental safeguards that we have to put in place. Um, but they also then present a whole host of other challenges to us in other ways. And so I'm just, I feel like we just need a deeper dive and some more information there, so. That's the.
Yeah, no, no, um, certainly. I I mean, I I think that um this is something that that we are adapting to um as well, um, is doing a better job of of projecting out. Uh, and uh from a a technical standpoint, early on, what some of the um potential uh challenges may be. A lot of this sometimes becomes where the school is also located. So for instance, uh, with stormwater management, if we're at the bottom of the hill or if we're at the back of the neighborhood where all of the water is coming, we are inherently responsible, even though it's not on our side, even though we could not have planned for it. We may be required to ha- retain additional water because that's where the flow of water comes. And so, so, so those are some things that, you know, we are learning and and understanding uh and and making sure that we get better um, uh, at that and having engagement with Deepi um early on in the process, uh specifically of site design, et cetera. Uh, so that we can, you know, really put our arms around um potential cost and and uh potential impacts that we have, so.
And that, and my question really is, has Deepi presented like a a map of our county and sort of hotspot for storm wa- hotspots for stormwater areas, like, like, for example, like, if we have places that are low elevation, are they giving us like a map that's saying, school design should be off limits here? Am I making sense here, like?
No, 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 yeah, would that, that exists. Because, because what happens is, is in your process, you're doing hydrology reports, you're doing all of that, the engineers are doing all of that. What it ends up be- being is, they submit a plan and Deepi says, we want more. Or or we want it bigger or 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 we or, you know, so, so one of the things that we will will be dealing with in the blueprint schools and making uh adjustments is if you've been, you see these massive pits uh that that are there that, you know, these are required, those are stormwater management uh devices. So um Colin Powell was there earlier today, there's a million gallon tank underneath the uh the the parking lot that we were required to put in. Uh, and so to to hold up water in addition to significant stormwater management um ponds around the the school, which, you know, are necessary. But now, you know, working with building services, because this is something that we're understanding across all of our schools, is that we're responsible for maintenance. So, you know, we put all of these in, we need to be able to maintain them. And so we're working to figure out, to your point, is on the construction side, we get it. But also, there are attendant costs to PG CPS for doing this as we go forward. Um, and and how can we structure it in a way that makes sense? Um, we are looking into some options and working with um uh with 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 the county uh on on specific uh opportunities uh that we can uh find ways to to provide from the maintenance side and reduction of our cost as well. And so, but yes, we can definitely uh connect and identify uh someone from Deepi to kind of give an overview of the uh of of the uh stormwater management and and uh water quality control regime uh that the that the county utilizes.
Because really, it seems like so much of a heavy lift on you all and the person that's asking for a permit. It's kind of like you're guessing. And then they're saying, okay, do more and more and more. It's kind of like doing your taxes, right? It's like you all are the authority and we are guessing how what we should be doing, whereas it would be a lot easier. Sorry.
That's fine.
Baby just had a little little issue here. So I'm gonna turn it over um to our next part of the Blueprint Schools update. Thank you so much.
No problem. So, um, uh, it was great to see many of you also at Legislative Day where some of this was 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 talked about. Um, really, the the updates um as we are are looking uh to move forward um into the legislative season and into budget season are there are two distinct as from two distinct parties and bodies. So the first piece is around the statute. Um, a request to extend the deadline uh that we have until for six months to December thirty-first, as well as authorizing, there's a provision in the statute that while state money starts to be utilized or funded this year, we don't have access to that money. It stays at the state for a year. Um, when our modeling shows us receiving that money beginning in fiscal uh twenty-five, uh, and we are able to take benefit of of interest income that we built into the model uh for the next thirty years. And so uh that's an administrative fix. Um, the IAC and MSA are supportive of that fix. Um, and so uh those are the two requested statutory uh requests that we have in addition to more money. So let me be clear, that that's that's a request as well, but these are the two um statutory fixes. Um, as it relates to the county level, as it relates to um OMB and the flexibility that we've talked about around being able to um uh bifurcate funds or pay funds from capital um instead of all lot of operating. Um, that is our local request of of the uh of the county. Um, and so we um have uh some meetings set up in the new year with OMB uh to continue to to push this and to talk through uh how we can make this uh work for uh for the school system. And so that Chief Howell uh does not have as many heart palpitations as she's probably suffered uh in the past uh five months as we try to uh address uh this uh thi- this new requirement that we were not expecting. Um, with that said, um, the request for uh for this office was to really, for for us, was to talk about um what we're doing on the MBE, CBB, and um subcontractor outreach. Uh, and I wanted to start with explaining what that is and how it's structured in the program so that you all get a sense of of what we are trying to accomplish. So, um, there are many ways to address MBE participation. Um, MBE, Minority Business Enterprise, CBB, which is a distinction of Prince George's County, is county-based business. Um, and then there are other distinctions within that CBB umbrella, uh, county-based MBE, local, locally-based small business, locally-based business, there are other designations. Uh, but um particularly, we decided um with Phase One is that we don't want um, MBE participation for participation. We wanted it tied to specific dollars. Like, so when we say that the requirement for Phase One was thirty percent, that means that thirty percent of eligible procured dollars went to MBEs. And we exceeded that goal in Phase One. We ended up at thirty-three percent. I believe we ended up at around a hundred and sixty-three million dollars that were procured to um MBEs and county-based businesses. Um, and so that was everything from uh steel all the way down to paint. Um, and uh now that we've ended the construction portion of this program, for the next thirty years, they must still adhere to the thirty si- thirty percent requirement. And so this is our ability as a school system to be uh to help in terms of generating um opportunities for county-based businesses and small businesses because we're gonna have sustained work in six schools for the next thirty years. Every school has to be repainted every two years. Every school like so, so that those are the type of things that we have put in place from a building capacity standpoint. Um, and so we took Phase One and we met it and we bumped it up to thirty-five percent. Um, so for Phase Two, um utilizing, um, but this time that the driver of the metrics are the state. We have to comply with the state requirements and then whatever we do above that. And that's where the CBB comes in for Prince George's County. And so that's what we're working through and the MOU that you all will see and approve that lays out um, uh, the uh the the funding mechanisms, but that's what we have to finalize uh between the four parties, um, is exactly uh what what that looks like. Um, and preferably, we can get that done as quickly as possible uh so we can move on. Um, so, um, as I put here, for Phase Two, we are looking at somewhere between, you know, we we're using an example of about seven hundred million dollars for capital cost. So within four years, from twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight, uh, the delivery dates of these schools, we are projecting possibly of upwards of around two hundred and forty-five million dollars that we will put back into MBE and county-based businesses. And so that is the requirement that the developer has signed up for. Um, that is um what we are um holding them accountable to. Uh, there is no waiver. If they fail to meet it, there is a financial penalty. Um, and so uh that is our first, you know, and that that is our first move as we move forward and making sure that we are a good community partner uh in the in the county. We get a lot of county money. We want to do all we can to put that money back into the county as much as possible. To date, and this is coming directly from uh Progressive Education Partners, uh, the developer that was selected. As you can see, they started outreach in April because we made it clear in January that it was a thirty-five percent requirement. So you can't just get started today to find a pipeline of businesses to support the effort that's going on. Um, and so this is their efforts to date. Um, there's actually an event tomorrow uh with the uh the iron workers. Um, they are, we are working together um to put together an outreach plan uh beginning in January that actually will tie into um each of the schools. Um, so, um, we are starting um now outreach efforts to specifically the, some of the immediate schools and schools that have requested them. So we've met with the Fairwood Community. Uh, we met with the uh Templeton Community. Uh, tomorrow, we'll meet with Hyattville. We're gonna set up a meeting with the Margaret Brent uh community. Um, and just to introduce, but then as we go forward, we want to make sure that we tie um, uh, that outreach and the community outreach with understanding, these are additional contractor outreach opportunities. What you don't see is what will start happening in the spring, which will be employment outreach opportunities, which is where we will start thinking through and working with uh employee PGC and identify potential opportunities and additional offerings that a lot of these subcontractors will have because they will get work and then they will need additional staff. Um, and so, so that is, you know, where, what we're focusing on and what we want to do as it relates to the outreach uh component of this. Uh, this is incredibly significant. This is important to us. At a later date, we'll be back to talk about the community investment piece of this, which is parallel uh with the contractor piece. This is, that's the economic development piece of this. But but that is what, you know, we we are looking at. Um, and then finally, um, we are working to get a Phase Two website put up that will allow um a direct access to all of the information that we are providing to everyone. All of our meetings are recorded, all of our presentations are preserved. Everything that we do, um, and have done, um, we've kept uh online. And uh we're working to get a Phase Two work uh uh website up and running so that we are um able to communicate um the status. Um, there's a, you know, um, uh, unfortunately, sometimes when there's a vacuum of information, uh, folks uh create some and and there's a lot of worry. Um, but um right now, we are still uh moving forward as we've been doing. We have our marching orders from Superintendent House of 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 focusing on getting this done. Um, and uh that is my update um uh around uh Blueprint Schools and the outreach efforts uh to date.
Thank you so much. Um, colleagues, if you have any questions, go ahead and raise your hand. I will go to Board Member Rout, Chair McInnes Murray, um, and and these, we have uh Board Member Brandon Jackson. Um, if you could promote him to being a panelist, uh, that would be good. And Vice Chair Walker, please feel free to ask questions if you have any. You've, you're welcome to ask questions. Thanks. You can go ahead, my Board Member Rout.
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to go back to the screen where we were talking about um the capital budget uh that we were paying. Hmm, hmm, maybe two slides back. Back, keep going. Hmm, I don't know. I lost it. Uh, well, however, it was a slide to, oh, yeah, here it is. Affordability payments, that's what we are advocating for. Could you help me understand, um, with our six schools that we built, did we pay using our capital budget previously? Uh, how did that precedent start?
They, Phase One was a totally county-funded, um, por- partially funded by the county um, and partially funded by PG CPS out of our capital budget. So that's what our expectation was as we started planning for Phase Two two years ago. Um, uh, Mr. Matlock had already identified through the projections of CIP budget, a reserve of CIP funds to fund Phase Two. So we were working and started this process expecting to use the same um approach. Um, and and OMB uh made it clear that um the expectation was that for Phase Two, um, we were required to utilize and make our payments out of the operating budget.
I'm just stuck on that, um, that we didn't know. And I know that we're real, we're knee-deep in this and we kind of need to move forward. But I just, you know, just, I'm I'm sure we're gonna continuous, we're we're gonna continue to build schools using this model because it works. I just think uh we, how can we course correct? I know we're advocating to um provide payment out of both capital and operating. We've, you know, talked to our legislators about this, um, thankful to our Policy and Governance Committee for putting on an awesome legislative day. But what more uh do you? But what more uh do you, uh ca- can you tell us that we should be able to? Uh can you just give us some things that we should, we can do to support you? Maybe like a Plan DEF?
I I mean, right, right now, we we have uh full court press. Look, I I mean, I think what we uh, look, first of all, we've gotten some great news. One, they expect, and one of the reasons why we make this request to extend the statutory deadline, the uh the Federal Reserve has said that they anticipate three interest rate drops. So in June, when we got their price to where they are right now, interest rates went up a point and a half. So it went from five percent to seven percent or six and a half percent. So, you know, hearing that we have three uh interest rate cuts coming, regardless of how much it is, it's a savings to us over what we're seeing now. Um and so that's where, you know, I I wanna be clear is that there are a lot of balls in the air, not just this one. It's that this is what we can control and we can control from a budgetary standpoint. Um uh what we know is coming and what we know is gonna be very difficult for the school system to to address and swallow. I do believe that, you know, we have um made it clear what our position is and what the impact of this will have. Um and, you know, and I think Chief Howell has said it best is that, you know, we appreciate and we are incredibly supportive of the money that we received, but this is turning into a a pseudo uh, you know, uh unfunded mandate in some ways and is is that, you know, we uh we also started that process when you were saying, you know, what did we know? We knew we had to do six schools. We were told we had to do eight in March. So we we were planning a process, you know, to deliver six schools uh two uh a year and a half ago. Cause it was in the statute to deliver at least six schools. So, you know, that changed and they didn't tell us. We were just told the day that it passed. And so so it's tho- those are the things that, you know, I wish, I I I wish I could say that, you know, we 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 could have uh seen all of this coming. Um it just, every day is 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 uh feel like Forrest Gump is a box of chocolates. You just don't know what, you know. Unfortunately, some things have popped up, but you know, but we're managing it. And I um and we're managing it because of the fact that uh we are all aligned, that this is something that we have to get done. Um and we have done it before. And so we know um what we can accept and what we can't. Um and as we structure this, but I I think what's happening now in terms of the advocacy, in terms of making folks aware that, you know, this is, it will have a long-term impact on our ability to do everything else that we wanna do as a school system. Um because inherently, this is capital. We're paying for the building of schools. Um and so I I think that we will continue to have that conversation. I think the the ability of of the board um to to continue to weigh in and advocate and to make folks aware um that we are available anytime, anyplace, anywhere to provide a briefing and an update. Uh Dr. Coleman and I, we, hey, we can go wherever they need us to be uh to provide information. Um and so, you know, we we are, uh I I would say that's the other thing that you can tell them is that, you know, uh we we are traveling circus. We'll go wherever ne- wherever is necessary for us to provide what we've been able to do. Um this is a incredible story that we've been able to do. It hasn't been perfect. It hasn't been, you know, without um headache and 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 I'm sure um uh lessons learned. But, you know, we we delivered six schools in two and a half years for our students. And uh that this is something that, you know, we want to ensure that, you know, w- we don't turn it into uh, you know, a uh an arbitrage on our on our out-year budgets. Um um, you know, ju- just just to make sure that we deliver the type of schools that our students need.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna go to Chair Mickens Murray and then Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you. Uh and thank you so much, um Board um Chair Adam Stafford. And also, um Mr. Washington for your comments. I have uh two things. First, who determined that we needed to do two new schools? You said we started out with six. Who made the decision?
Uh the state, state legislature.
They imposed that on us.
Yeah, they were, they were provided, we we did a structural analysis study. Um and in that structural analysis study, it was determined that uh Templeton and Old Woodmore uh were critically um uh were were deemed critical. Um and that's where they, and that information was provided to the IAC. Um and then it ended up being a requirement for us. So but we were not, we 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 were not part of the discussion uh of of whether or not to include them or not.
Okay, I, if I did not misunderstand you, you said that um Mr. Matlock identified some capital funds that were in reserve?
No, so so in our, in his out-year budgeting. So uh starting probably in twenty twenty-two, when we first started planning this out, as we were looking at his five-year budget, he was starting to allocate
Okay.
Money to in anticipation of a phase-two payment um and and from his just planning. Uh so there's no reserves, but it was how, it was how he was uh looking at his out-year budget.
He was projecting it. Okay, so so I got that piece. So with um the um the phase-two website, well, first with the money. The state imposed two schools on us. Then the state came back and said, you will build those six, eight schools, but you will use operational funds.
No, it was two, yeah, it was two, the county came back and said for operating funds.
Okay.
Not, tha- this is a county um determination, uh because they provide our budget.
Get that. So why did the county do that?
They, from a fiscal policy standpoint, the argument is, you, they don't wanna pay debt with debt. So the capital budget is bonded money um or debt that they go out and receive. And there, the argument is, why get debt to pay that? Um and so that's the, that's the fiscal uh policy uh uh standpoint of of OMB.
Okay, so and finally, you said the door is still open that the administration, you, I guess, and Mr. Co- Dr. Coleman. You're going to meet with OMB?
Yes.
Around this issue?
Yes.
So does that mean that you're communicating to us that there may be some opportunity for you to influence their decision to influence the county's decision?
Well, OMB is the one that made the decision. So we are going back to Director Early. Um and and actually, we just booked it with with Chief Howell as well. So we all are gonna get in the room together and lay out exactly the impact that phase-two will have uh on our ability uh to uh to meet the demands and the requirements as set up by um uh the, you know,
Okay.
Uh current win, etc. So.
Are you doing this independent as a school system? Or is you, are you doing it in in collaboration with uh the county council?
No, it's with the school system. It's a meeting that we.
I just need to be clear in my head who the players are in the room. Okay, and you've made the county, well, I guess with this meeting, you've made them aware, but did you make them aware before this meeting?
Uh yes, we've had uh, we we we've talked about this issue for nine months. So.
I understand that.
And I've made, and I have made that, made it very clear. Um I think our last meeting was before Thanksgiving. And so we, we have, we have made it clear.
Then one final question. Did we send a uh separate letter to the AIC? I know that the county exec and the county council signed a letter that went to the BIC. Did the, and my understanding was that the school system, we had until November thirtieth to send something. Did we send that something, that letter?
Yes, we sent, we sent a letter that was approved by the board to the IAC. Um and then there was a separate letter sent by the council.
I get that. I don't mean to cut you off, but if if you sent a letter to the AIC dated November thirtieth, or did you send a letter to the AIC that was dated October twenty-sixth?
I I don't know the specific date that'll. Superintendent's office.
Okay, I need, I n- as a follow-up.
Okay.
One needs a copy of whatever that letter was that you sent, so that we are clear. Because my understanding, and and maybe I'm just confused, and if I am, this will help clarify it. I know I've seen the letter that stated October twenty-sixth. I have not seen a letter that was written or sent anywhere but for November.
Well, it would not have changed. We 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 did not change the date because we did not change the letter. So our letter that you all approved, and Dr. Coleman, correct me if I'm wrong, that letter was never amended or changed. Uh uh Superintendent House made it very clear that we were moving forward with the letter that was approved on October twenty-sixth that we submitted to the council. We would not, would not have needed to redraft a letter.
Okay, that's what I needed to understand. So it was never necessary to send an additional letter if we were sticking to the position that we had in October, correct?
Correct. That's my.
I never understood that. So I appreciate that. That's clarity. Thank you, sir. That's it for me.
Thank you, um Chair Mickens Murray, but you're still saying that you want to know the outcome of the letter that was sent?
No, I don't need to know the outcome of the letter that was sent. He, they, the system, as I understand it, they are going to work with OMB to see if they can influence a change in some way. What I understand today is the position that the board had. October twenty-sixth is the, is still the recommended position from the superintendent. There has been no change as far.
This is conflating the two issues. I'm sorry, I don't need to interrupt you. We're conflating two different issues here. I'm talking about the letter to the IAC regarding um our CIP plan and Ms. Washington, correct me if I'm wrong, which we were.
You're breaking up, Sheila.
And you're asking for the outcome of that letter. This situation with the OMB is a different. I'm gonna go to Viper and try to circle back.
Okay. All right, uh we can go to Vice Chair Walker if you don't mind, Sheila, and then come back to you. It's your meeting, though.
Sounds good. I heard that piece that uh the chair said. Thank you so much, Chair Adam Stafford. I appreciate it. And thank you so much, um Mr. Washington, for always keeping us updated on this issue. I actually um am a proponent of the additional two schools, mainly because structurally, they were imperative uh for us to make sure that we had. Um however, the funding, on the other hand, of what we're talking about, does raise a bit of concern. So as we, what I'm anticipating in my brain is that this isn't gonna be the last time that we hear that we have additional schools that we're gonna have to update. Our schools are, we have schools that are older and have a lot of maintenance and uh capital issues that are resulting. Therefore, what I'm looking for you to help me with is um what advocacy looks like. So just correct me if I'm wrong. Does advocacy look like um advocating for future CIP money as we build additional schools? Right? And so of course, we want uh our CIP money for sure. And then knowing that this really took these additional schools, took a, took a, a a left turn. Uh it might have been a right turn, but whichever turn it took, where we have to come out of operational funds now for this. Tell me, how do we fund, how can money come in to fund operationally, to be earmarked to um situations like this? That's, I I miss, I don't understand that part um of the finances. So if you can help me to understand that, then I can know what I'm talking to people about when I say that we need additional funding as we look forward. Because what I'm anticipating is this is only the beginning of our dilapidated schools that we're gonna need to update. Does that make sense, Mr. Washington?
I I have a uh have a sense of what you're asking, and I I think this will answer. So number one, as it relates to future impacts and future schools. Um early spring, CIP, the Department of Capital Programs, is releasing a RFP to do the next, to find a uh a group of firms, engineering firms, to do an assessment on another round of our, the balance of schools. So we are going to proactively look at the full asset class of the school system so that we can start to put arms around what that looks like. And we could possibly learn that there are other uh schools in dire need. Um and so that's, that's happening uh parallel. And but one thing to point out is that all of that will continue to come out of capital. Uh not, the only reason we're talking about operating budget is specific to the P three. Nothing else changes, so that as we advocate and as we all advocate, yes, advocate for as much capital uh program dollars as possible, um specifically from uh the IAC and the state. Um and uh because there is a a complementary match from the, from the county. But, you know, we want as much uh state money as possible, um could, because we're able to utilize that on our bigger projects. So um so as we go forward and put together a plan, that is coming out of the 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 CIP. Um and so uh as it relates to the operating budget, specifically in this case, the way that it is structured is that it's three parties are providing funding. Uh the state, uh the county and PGCPS. Um and the reason why the county is uh able to dictate like how we're utilizing the funds and where they want us to pay them from is because our, we do not have independent bonding or budgetary power as it relates to rece- like raising funds. And so we get it from the county and the county OMB. And so what they're looking at is their bonding capacity. They're looking at their triple-A, triple-A bond rating and all of those things when they make these policy and fiscal decisions. What we are saying to them is like, we understand that. We believe, however, that there is a better way to do this than to immediately drop the twenty-seven million on our operating budget. That, we we didn't have it, like, like literally, I told Chief Howell this, I believe, this summer. So that's when we, like, we we had, when we started the budget process to think about this. So it wasn't that we had two years to start planning it out. Um and so so that's where, you know, that's the conversation we wanna have with OMB. Is that it's not that we don't, that we never wanted to come to operating. What we are under, what we are trying to convey to them is that we believe that, you know, by working with Chief Howell, let's figure out how the best way to, if this will eventually be our long-term obligation, we get that. However, like, we believe that there has to be an ability for a a staircase-type of blend approach that maybe we ultimately get to full operating budget, but it's not tomorrow and it's not twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five. It may be twenty twenty-eight where we are able to ramp up, just depending on what we're able to do. I'm sure Chief Howell will say, I would prefer never. So, you know, that that's, I mean, I I I, but it's, you know, with the recognition that that's where they wanna be, but that's the conversation we wanna have. Um we do and are excited about getting the additional eight schools. The count, the state gave us sixty-five million dollars for those two schools. I just showed you all how much we're we're paying right now for schools. So that didn't cover the cost of one new school. And so we appreciate the support, but that's also a challenge as well because we, we believe we basically are paying, you know, eight schools with the budget for, you know, uh tha- that that doesn't commiserate with with the eight schools that we're being required to uh to build.
Thank you. Um, so, so I have a couple of questions here uh around this issue. And I'm happy to see that we are um pushing for that um flexible approach with OMB. So I guess I I'd like to go back to the beginning of this deal, which I think happened before I was elected. You know, and I I have never seen the original contract. And um I'm wondering, can we get a copy of the original contract? Because I'm trying to understand, was the, was the contract, did it delineate that funding was always supposed to come out of our capital budget?
Um that would not have been in the contract. That was um what detected the funding uh is what we, and we can provide it. It's online. Uh but we, I definitely can provide it uh is the memorandum of understanding. So the memorandum of understanding sets forth uh the contribution uh uh limits of both the county and uh PGCPS. Uh that's the the underlying agreement that set forth the the funding um obligations uh in phase one.
Okay, and did that, did that MOU fairly delineate that it was supposed to come out of capital funding of phase one?
Um I almost am sure if it didn't explicitly, it was, it was the intent that it came out of. And that's how we're funding it. We're funding it out of capital. Um and so uh that was um but I can make sure if it's explicitly said, but that's how we're funding phase one. Um and that was the.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I'm just, you know, because it's just really shocking to me that um an office would just make such an abrupt shift. Um it seems like maybe was there some misunderstanding around where this funding would come from, from the outset? You know, if if the school system was under the impression that this would always come out of capital and OMB is, was under the impression that this would always come out of operating. I'm just trying to get down to the source of where this has come. of where this has come from. Um, so I'm, I'm asking if we can get that. And then, you know, I, I am really concerned about just sort of our plan for paying for the school, like for each phase, because I know we're supposed to be paying, I think it's, help me understand if they, I think, isn't it fifteen million? Um, annual, is it fifteen million, how much annually are we supposed to be paying for the P three?
Which phase? So phase. Phase two, right now, we don't know. We are working on the pricing. The affordability limit that we have right now established is sixty four million dollars.
I think what the board needs to see, and this is my request from you all, is to provide us with a spreadsheet that goes through phase one, our annual payments for how long we are on the hook for those payments, then phase two. Because I think board members, we need to see and understand so we can project, you know, that will help us with our advocacy. I think that we don't have a full picture of that. And so if that can be provided for us by our next meeting, I think that would be really helpful. And then, you know, just, this is just a, a, a straight up question, given that we were throwing this curve ball, we can't afford it. You know, are we able to do all eight schools at once, you know? Can we ask for this to be staggered? Because the reality is, if we go forward and build these schools, you know, it's going to significantly impact our operating budget. And as you all have explained to us, the services that we can offer our students that we so clearly need. Looking at what has happened just yesterday in my community, we need mental health support. And one of the things that we know that's going to be impacted by this shortfall are mental health supports. So that my question to us here is, can we afford to do this all at once? They're saying we have to build eight schools. Did they say when? Can we stagger this? Because it, it just seems a little bit unreasonable for us to have to build these schools in this same timeframe, given the limited financial constraint.
Um, that, to answer your question, the statute requires that, uh, we deliver and we enter into an agreement to deliver eight schools by June thirtieth, or we forfeit eight hundred and ten million dollars. That's, that's currently what is in the statute. And so that's, um, so any, any changes to the mix of schools to the timing, that would be at the state legislature.
So, and, and let me just be clear, the, it's into, to enter into an agreement to build the schools, but it doesn't say when, right? Does it say that they, it, it says we have to, we are agreeing that we will build them, but isn't the, our, our M O U with the developers, where we determine when and how and the cost?
We've staggered the delivery now. The problem will be, it's only gonna get more expensive if you delay it. And it's not, the, it, the, the structure of this is that they have to give us a firm price by March eleventh. They will not be able to give us a firm price if we say we want you to build us a school in twenty thirty two, um, or in twenty thirty six. Um, that's the, that's the complexity of this, is that they are taking risk of pricing out today how much a school will cost in twenty twenty eight, which is when they would deliver the last set of schools to give us a number that fits affordability. So, so that's, it's a lot more complex than, because we are spacing about twenty six, twenty seven and twenty eight um, to allow for, you know, hopefully, uh, some smoothing out of the funds flow. But, um, they won't be able to, to project out and they won't be able to agree because the risk is too high, um, for them. And we would not accept a, a plug number that they will probably add significant inflation to, um, sight unseen, just because we don't know what the world will look like in whatever years we decide to build it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it just, it just seems to me that this, right now, it's, you know, we, we can't afford this. And, um, you know, of course, I've been out doing my advocacy work, but, you know, I guess my three questions that I'm just asking for answers to, and then we can move on, are just the origin of the, and the understand memorandum of understanding and what, where funding was supposed to come from orig- originally. And then, you know, understanding, you know, a, a full plan of where funding will come from it for, for few, for the future projects and what the board is gonna be expected to pay. Because that full picture is something I think we're missing. Um, and then just the last question about timing and, yeah. Um, colleagues, did anyone else have a question before we move into our next section? And I'm sorry, I'm having such terrible, um, go ahead, Vice Chair Walker.
Hey, we were able to hear you, um, very, very well that time. You know, thank you very much for acknowledging me. You know, as I just close out my thoughts, I really love where the conversation is going and really thinking about opportunities to ensure that we have our money. You know, schools are very important, and I have some dilapidated schools inside of my district as well. And so one of the things I was just thinking about is after the, after, I'm gonna say the verdict for lack of a better word, after the feedback comes back on what our funding is gonna be, maybe we take an opportunity to take you up on, maybe the Obama Committee, um, Chair, um, Adam Stafford. Maybe this could just put a pin in it. Maybe there's an opportunity for your committee to lead a discussion that happens. Um, at a different level to talk about future funding, because as I mentioned before, this will happen again. Um, when schools have these audits and they find structural problems, it will happen again. And I'm just trying to figure out, how can we get in front of this, not only about what happened and how did we get here, but how are we gonna fund these? Because we're in budget season now. We are already being told that we're struck, oh, I don't have my picture on, I'm so sorry, guys. We're already being told, that's not helpful. We're already being told that, you know, we're struggling with money and funds that's coming in and things might be pulled. But yet we will continue to have these schools that are gonna pop up that we need funding for. So I'm just trying to look at, maybe Obama can help us with, um, getting to the right tables to have these discussions so that as folks go in rooms and make these amazing recommendations that we do need, we can also talk about funding at that level so that folks can understand. And we can have Mr. Washington there. So just room for thought, um, for leadership on making sure we're there. I think that would be amazing.
Thank you. I agree with that. And, and actually, it makes me think, Mr. Washington, you know, my question is, can we go back to the I A C and ask for a triage model? Where it's like, this is the amount of schools, but the, the school could change, like, you know, we, they may do their structural analysis and determine that this school is actually a code red and that will replace another school that we thought would be in the sixth, but the amount wouldn't change. But the, the, the level of urgency may change, because I think it's just unreasonable to add more without it being funded, fully funded. Um, and so my ask is for us to present an opportunity for them to impose a triage model based on their structural analysis.
For, for future? And, yeah, I, I, I definitely think, I mean, and the I A C is, is going through changes as well as they look at, you know, because they're going to a more portfolio approach. Um, where, and so just so everybody is clear, this package of, of six schools. So one thing that I, I wanna make very clear here, the I A C and the state has veto rights over this contract. So while we can do everything we wanna do, at the end of the day, the state theoretically can say no. Or yes. Um, we, we don't expect that. We're hand in hand. We talk to them all the time. Uh, but, so the, the schools that were selected, they were selected and approved because they have that right in the statute to approve the schools that were selected. So, so, so that kind of, just to give some background here on, we, we have autonomy because we're able to run this process and to take the lead, and they have deferred to us and we appreciate it, and they, 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 they respect what we've been able to do. But the way that the statute is written, um, they still have the ability to dictate and to, uh, to, to require certain things of us as we move this process forward. So, um, that, that's another piece of this, as we were talking about the, um, I A C getting more involved, and they have been very helpful. Literally, in terms of helping shape this, but that's one, uh, piece of the, uh, um, of the statute that's there as well.
And, and perhaps part of our reserves can be reserved for ca- capital overages. You know, and that, that might be something we can talk about more with, um, Chief Howell. Um, I'm gonna move on now to, um, Chief Howell, um, to give her presentation. Thank you so much. And I do apologize, I'm not on camera. I'm having some technical issues.
Uh, excuse me, uh, Chair Adam Stafford, I have one question for clarity.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Washington. Is, am I understanding correctly that the operation funds are only for this phase three, six schools? And going forward, we're going back to the capital funds?
So, so the, the only established P three that we have is the phase two, that's it. So we're not looking down the road.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I misspoke. I meant phase two.
Yes, ma'am. So, so that will, that's the only conversation around operating funds is specific to this P three. Any other school construction will be still capital.
Okay, that, I just wanted to be clear about that. So, so in the future, we're going back to the capital funds.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, oh, yeah. So, so we, so to think about this, there's a three-pronged process that we're using for capital programs. It is regular C I P, so Sutlin, uh, and, uh, uh, Cool Springs, uh, Wurt, Glen Ridge, then there are stage renovations, uh, Philicy Williams, uh, James Madison Middle School, and then there's the P three. And so, so those are the three components, the fa- uh, the C I P and the stage renovations stay as they are and will continue as they are funded through the C I P. This is a literal, literal narrow slice is phase two is that we're talking about.
Yeah, it's an anomaly, I think, but what's troubling us is that anomaly comes at a time when we need the operational funds for the students in academics.
Yes.
So that is the challenge. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll move on to Chief How now. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, or I guess good evening, everyone. I'm actually gonna transition to my earphones, make sure you're able to hear me a little bit better. Sometimes the distance from the computer makes it a little held, not heard accurately, so just. All right, um, do I have sharing with on the screen? I'm gonna share with you, um, an overview of the budget amendment uh, process or form that will be utilized for this upcoming session. Is everyone able to see the amendment screen? Okay?
Yes.
All right. So first off, just wanted to remind everyone of a couple of critical dates relating to this process. So, um, the budget book has been published and a hard copy has been shared with all the board members. You have the opportunity to go through and formulate your questions and submit those. Um, the first set of questions are due right when we come back from the break on January third. Um, and that will be for work session number one. The second round of questions will be due shortly thereafter on January twelfth for work session number two. Um, and then obviously when we get to the final work session, that's where there will be conversation and dialogue around the amendments. We are gonna be leveraging the amendments template that we shared with the team last year. Um, as a way to help guide you through the process of information that's really needed in order for us to assess and understand the request that's being made. Um, we understand that some members in the past have utilized a board action summary write-up narrative. Um, it oftentimes can be challenging to understand the full scope of what's being requested just with the narrative. And so while this spreadsheet may appear a bit daunting, um, it's really intended to be, um, an easy guide to step you through the items to consider when you're making your suggested amendments. So this has been shared with, um, each of you. I believe I know shared with, um, Adam Stafford on December thirteenth. So I believe at this point, it's been shared with the broader board members. Um, the copy that you receive is just the master template. So the first thing you wanna do is make a copy for yourself. You can either go to file and make a copy, or you can download and, you know, download it on your computer, do your respective changes and then submit it back to, um, to administration. So there's several tabs in here, but again, don't be overwhelmed with it. It is really user-friendly. If you can type, you can fill this out. Um, the first tab is just a, a way for you to navigate throughout the remainder of the workbook. These are all hyperlinks that will take you to the subsequent tabs in here, but you can just start with tab number one. And, um, you want us to start really with the first section here. Um, I am gonna just kind of note that there's a, uh, space here that will capture the name of the amendment. You don't need to type it here because as you complete the rest of this document, this will be auto-populated. So really just start with the first section here where it's asking for, um, the board member sponsor. And their dropdown, and let me make this a little bit bigger. Is everyone able to see this? It's at a hundred and fifty. Um, when you select the dropdown, all the board members' names are captured here. So you can select your name. If there's a co-sponsor associated with this amendment, there is a space for you to select up to three. And then in this final space here, you can just free-form type additional names. The goal obviously is not to receive the same amendment from multiple people. So to the extent that there's, um, a desire for multiple board members to wanna sponsor, um, an amendment tied to the budgeting process, collaborate amongst yourselves, and you, then you can submit one document and capture the co-sponsors here. Um, continuing on down with the document, again, there's a dropdown where it allows you to select the division that the amendment would be, um, uh, applicable to, responsible for the actual implementation. Now, as you select the division, I'm just gonna select academics as an example. You see Dr. White's name is captured here. I'm gonna go back up here. I'm just gonna fill it as we go along. I'm gonna select, um, Adam Stafford. Her name is populated there. Um, and then you can just type in the name of the department that this might be tied to. So maybe it's curriculum and instruction as an example. Um, then you come down here and you continue to fill out the name of the amendment. So just, it's just free form. So just type what it is. Um, you would indicate a proposed start date. And then in here, you wanna indicate the amendment type. And there's a dropdown. Is it a change to your current program that we have? Is it a new program or is it a reduction of a currently budgeted item? Um, you provide a brief description of what it is. And again, it's just free-form typing. And then a little bit more detailed description around the amendment, similar to what you would actually type in a board action summary. Um, is this a pilot program? It's the dropdown. Again, you select yes or no. You go down to the next box. Um, would this budget amendment be ongoing? Or is it for a one-time expense? And there's an option here if you just select this change is ongoing or this change is one time. And then other key background information that you feel might be useful. Again, it's free form. You can just type it in here. The next section allows you to align it to the appropriate T twenty six outcome goals. So there's a dropdown that allows you to select which one of the four would be appropriate. Um, same thing with the related strategic initiative imperatives, the Board of, Board of Education priorities and the superintendent's focus areas. Again, all these are dropdowns and you can select the appropriate one. Um, the next section here, there's notes along the way that tells you this information is auto-populated, so you don't need to do anything with this. You then just proceed, proceed to the second tab. Um, again, it's sort of a guided process. So it's gonna ask you as it relates to your amendment. Um, are there, um, students that will be affected by this? You select yes or no. Uh, will that impact schools, central office departments, new position, current positions? Um, change in existing positions. Are there any other stakeholders here that would be affected by this amendment? And you can type that in. That's free form. Once you complete that, you go to the next tab here. Um, as you get through the rest of some of these questions, to the extent that you might need some assistance potentially, if you don't, not sure of the impact, you can sort of reach out to administration. We can provide that support. Um, but on this tab is where we wanna get a sense of the impact of students that may be impacted by the proposed amendment. Um, the first box here allows you to just type in what that number would be. Uh, actually, let me go back up to the top, excuse me. Um, how many students would be affected by this new program or initiative? You just type in that number here. Um, how the students would be affected by it, you just type it. It's just free form. What are the intended student outcomes? Um, what would be the evaluation period and what that would look like and the. Um, what would be the evaluation period and what that would look like and the intended outcomes, and have they been met? Again, this will be captured here, free-form. Um, provide any data-driven evidence of the effectiveness of this proposed amendment on students? Just type that free-form, and are there any other key considerations that should be, um, discussed, capture that here. Um, this then continues on to the next sections, and it will prompt you to say that if the change that you're making is not a reduction or is not an impact to the students in this way, then you can skip down to the subsequent section. But again, all the responses or questions are posed here, and then you can provide an appropriate response in these boxes. Here, I'm not gonna read through all of them, it's pretty self-explanatory, but it just gives you a way to kinda help formulate your thoughts and capturing them in a way, because again, this is useful information for administration to understand what it is that you're proposing and the impact that you're intending for this to have, potentially in this case on students. Um, continuing on down to the next section, um, same thing, if this is not a change to a currently budgeted program or item, you skip down to section two C. But if it is, you can go through and, you know, answer these corresponding questions and fill in these corresponding cells. Um, so we're now gonna go over to the next tab, and if there's an impact on schools. Um, as we know, we have over two hundred schools. Um, you may be proposing an amendment or a change to a school that will impact just a few or might impact our entire population of schools. This is where you would need to capture that related information here. Um, and so again, there's guided questions here, and the boxes are just free-form where you can provide your response accordingly. Um, let's see, continue over to tab two C. This is where information is being requested relating to departments and the impact that it may have on those areas. Again, the questions are along the side here, and you can just free-form type your responses accordingly. And if these tabs are not applicable, if the sections are not applicable, you can just skip over them. Every amendment is not created equal, and so each one may have different impacts, um, that might need to be captured and outlined. Um, if there's gonna be a, this position-related impact, we try to make it as easy as possible for you. Um, you come over to tab three A, and there is a dropdown that allows you to determine the type of change. Is it a new position, new position, a reduction in positions, or a change in an existing position? Um, the funding type, is it restricted, grant-related, unrestricted, or non-operating? Um, if it is tied to a grant, you would just type in the name of that here. Um, if you're proposing some sort of reduction in a position, you would just type in, you know, minus ten, minus one, minus five, whatever that number is. Um, if it's a new position, does it already exist? Um, there is a box for yes or no, or not applicable. Um, and then here we have a list of all the positions in the school, so it's a drop-down. So again, you can just go through and select the appropriate position depending on the change that's being proposed. And as you do that, I'm just gonna select academic theme as an example. It will automatically populate all of the other information that's needed for them. So we're not expecting you to know physician cost, et cetera, just find the name of the physician. Maybe it's classroom teacher, maybe it's instructional coach, resource teacher, whatever it may be. This will allow you to select it and then give us a sense of the impact that would be tied to that physician request. Moving on to the next tab, this is where you would capture your proposed, um, non-payroll-related or discretionary costs tied to the amendment. What we often see is the costs that are not necessarily tied to position, maybe supplies, contractual services, um, uh, instructional materials, those are typically the ones that we see, but depending on the amendment, it could be across the board. Going down here in the left, um, columns A, B, and C, the information's already filled out for you. It lets you know, um, or provides the category where our costs are aligned. Um, and there's a description for each one, so you understand the appropriate, um, category that would be selected. So for example, if you have contractual services, um, in addition to position change that you might wanna make, um, you would be able to look to determine where those contractual services would need to be, potentially depending on the type of cost it is. Going across the top here in orange, we have the, um, type of expenditures or non-payroll-related costs that you might be considering for this amendment, contractual services, supplies, materials, equipment, other costs, et cetera. Um, continually on in the section in green, same expense categories, but for restricted. And then finally, you have it on the non-operating side, so it could be across the board between those three areas. Often we see amendments around the unrestricted budget. Um, but you would just definitely just type in your amount, let's say it's five hundred thousand contractual services. Um, or five million relating to, um, this category, which is two oh two mid-level administration. And it gives you a description of what this category actually relates to. It could be related to other instructional costs, or it could be textbooks and supplies, it could be whatever, but you would wanna select the appropriate category where that expense type would need to be captured. This financial summary pulls the information in from the two tabs that we just went through. As you see, the five million dollars that I typed in is automatically showing up in the non-payrolls, uh, section. Um, I selected a position, which I think I did. Um, there must be something else that's not pulling in, but I'll just double-check that. But it would pull in the salary costs along with position requests that's been made, so you would have the total impact of your budget amendment. And then down here, you can provide a little bit more description around how this is gonna be funded. And that's, that's the, uh, magic part, because we need to be able to have a balanced budget, which we have currently. But if we're looking to make changes to the budget in any way, shape, or form, which could involve adding to the budget or potentially removing something away, then we have to determine what are we gonna do with the difference. So if we're adding in, um, contractual services of five million dollars, how are we gonna fund it? So this is where you would provide your recommendation on how that's gonna be done, it's gonna be a trade-off, something's gonna have to come out of the budget. Long gone are the days where we would just go to the county and ask for more money. With blueprint, it's a pretty, you know, defined amount that is based off of the state eight formulas in terms of what they actually contribute. Um, and that's what really drives the county contribution. So we need to make sure that as we're going through this process, we're thinking about how we're gonna be able to make this budget balanced as we go forward. For putting something in, something's gonna have to get cut in order to make room for the amendment that's being presented, um, forward. And then finally, we get down to the last, um, tab here for, um, board members, where if there's an alternative that could be considered to the amendment, this is the place where you could potentially capture that. Uh, those options here as well, there's space for up to three different alternatives, and it kinda guides you through what would that alternative look like, what are the pros and cons of that? Um, why did you propose this amendment as opposed to this alternative? Um, and then it guides you through that, those series of questions for not only one alternative, but up to two, um, as well. The last tab in here is for us, and this is where all of the information that you provided on the first few tabs helps the, uh, appropriate, um, division chief and their team to go through and to evaluate what is being requested. And so this is where our team would capture responses to the proposed amendment. And there's a series of, um, items here that they would be required to complete. Um, it would outline, you know, obviously the impact of division for this, the division chief, who would be leading this effort, um, and other key folks that might be involved in this implementation. Um, and then based off of these different questions or statements that are captured here, um, administration would have the opportunity to provide, uh, responses to the potential impact to what is being, uh, recommended as an amendment or change to the budgeting process, or to the, to the proposed movement. Um, down here, that continues on with the financial and other operational impacts associated with the proposed amendment. And then finally, there's just a space for additional comments if necessary. This section here, this last tab will be completed after we receive your amendments, which are due on February second. And then they are provided back to, um, first to the board committee to evaluate the amendments that have been submitted along with the responses. Um, but it'll be shared with the entire board, so there's an opportunity to understand, um, management's response or administration, administration's response to the amendments that are being put forth. Um, so that is the strongly recommended process that we're asking everyone to follow. Um, but again, we understand there is the option of typing up a board action summary that oftentimes just involves then back-and-forth questions that we have, because there's not enough information that's needed to understand what's being requested. So this is really the preferred way to be able to capture the information. And what we saw last year, it was a mix, some board members did the board action summary, some actually utilized this template. And those that utilized it, I mean, they filled out the, the boxes or the spaces that were needed. Um, but in many cases, it didn't take much time for them to go in to capture the information that was applicable to what they were recommending. And so they found it to be useful in a way to capture what they wanted to submit to, um, submit to administration. So I will pause and to see if there are any questions.
Okay, we're then, okay, go ahead, board member route, and then Chair McInnes Murray.
Uh, thanks Chief Howell, I just, um, a question came to mind when you were reviewing the form. Um, I just wanted to understand, um, about the fund balance. How much is in our fund balance? And what have we used to fund as it relates to our shortfalls that we've been discussing tonight? So that sixty-four million at or around that I'm hearing that we, that's coming out of our operating budget? So can you help me understand, number one, what's our fun ba- fun, our balance? And then two, how much of, um, our balance are we using to fund our budgetary shortfalls, uh, that the superintendent is proposing?
So our fund balance, uh, use of fund balance in the twenty-five budget is a hundred and twenty million, and that is a planned amount that we knew would be part of the twenty-five budgeting process. Um, a few years ago, during our budget formulation exercise, a decision was made to utilize a portion of our fund balance, um, a hundred and seventy-five million dollars over a seven-year period. And that, uh, set aside was specifically, um, done in order to help stabilize the impact of our negotiated agreements, not only for the three years, um, that those agreements were gonna be in effect, but also over a, a period of time. Um, and so currently, right now, the twenty-five portion of that seventy, a hundred and seventy-five million that we set aside uh, results in the use of fund balance of a hundred and twenty million dollars, and that is part of our budget proposal for twenty twenty-five. Our total fund balance, I don't have that number in front of me, but I can certainly provide you with that. Um, we don't utilize the fund balance, um, as a way to just close a budget gap. Um, that, that's not the best way to manage a budget, it's really intended to be for one-time uses. Um, and we need to make sure that we have a certain amount remaining in our fund balance, um, as well. And so as we look at our fund balance as it stands now, as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three, for the most reason year for which we close our books, we know that how much that we have remaining that has been earmarked tied to the one seventy-five that I spoke of earlier. Um, but other than that, we're not, there's not a planned use of fund balance to help close the budget gap. We are proposing to close the budget gap using some of our other reserves and other, you know, cost reductions that we've been required to make in order to have a balanced budget.
That's helpful, so why aren't we choosing to use our fund ba- balance for this one-time issue where there was a situation as, um, Mr. Washington shared with us, where this, you know, this request kinda like came out of nowhere, that to me seems like an emergency. Um, cause what I'm trying to get at is our children, they need in-classroom tutoring, they also need summer school, and they need mental health services. That is going, we not gonna, we not gonna have enough kids to get us to go into these schools if we don't save our children, right? So that's what I'm trying to understand, is what is our total fund balance? And why haven't we considered utilizing that for this budget shortfall using the same method that we've used in the past, which was, you know, planning for ourselves a certain number of years to pay ourselves, you know, back or whatever, the great plan seemed like worked in the past. Um, so I just wanna further understand, have we looked at that, using the fund da- balance to fund, uh, the, the shortfall as it relates to, uh, building our new schools?
Yeah, so I wanna be clear, when it comes to the shortfall that we're facing in twenty twenty-five, we're working and formulating the budget for this year, but the impact of the, um, availability payment that will be required to make out of the operating budget is for the next thirty years. It's not a one-time situation, so that is not, um, a wise use of the fund balance to pay for something over the next thirty years. And keep in mind, the fund balance is something that results from, um, budget appropriations that have not been fully spent in any given year, and we have had, um, some differences over the last several years that has resulted in money being contributed to the fund balance. Um, that's not always something that's going to occur, um, and that's not something that can sustain, you know, a thirty-year commitment. You don't have enough, you don't have enough remaining in your fund balance.
I, I don't want, I don't wanna cut you off, but I kinda do, because I don't wanna go down the road of being over thirty years. From what I'm hearing by the presentations is that this year, we have a need. We have a need to fulfill a gap. Um, so is it my understanding now that this gap is gonna be over the next thirty years? I was under the impression the gap is now impacting our, um, twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
No, this is gonna impact our budget for the next thirty years. The money that we get that's outlined in the blueprint legislation never considered redirecting funding from, uh, blueprint that's intended to go to the school, to pay for school construction. So we don't get additional money for this, so it is impacting the money that's being pumped into our school system, like all the other LEAs in the state. However, PG CPS, unlike other LEAs in the state, has this additional unfunded mandate that now we're gonna have to use the same dollars all the other schools' systems are getting to help pay for school construction. So that is gonna be a impact to us, not just for this year, but for the years to come. And so it will have an impact, it will be a shortfall for subsequent years that we're gonna have to solve for going forward as well.
Understood, understood, um, Chair Adam Stafford, um, I would just like, uh, an action item just to understand what is our total number in our fund balance, thank you.
Thank you, yes, Annie's, if you can record that as a follow-up, I'm gonna go to Chair McInnes Murray.
Thank you, uh, I was going along the sa- same lines that board member route was going. So I won't ask you the same questions, um, Chief Howell. But what I will ask for an action item, um, Chair Adam Stafford, is if we can get the fund balance that we had for twenty, for the school year twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, because what I'm interested in is knowing how those dollars were spent. And I know that one thing that was said was the negotiated agreements. Well, my understanding with budgeting is that if we factor in a raise, then the next year we project to include that in the cur- in that year's budget. So I'm not understanding how fund balances over the years take care of that. And then along the, the, the line of questioning that board member route just had, I'm understanding, and maybe, maybe you guys need to put it in writing for us so that we can be clear on this. I'm understanding that the, uh, the dollars, the operating dollars will be for school year twenty, twenty-four, and twenty-five only for construction. I'm not talking about, and I think what I hear you saying, uh, Chief Howell, is that because you need to spend those operating funds that, for that year, it causes a shortfall. But in my mind, I don't see that because I'm wondering, okay, it caused a shortfall this year, but we can put it back in the budget for the following years, or the out-years. So I guess in the, um, four-by-four that I had with you guys, one of the things that I came away understanding is that the board could decide to reduce that, um, fund balance by a percentage. So I guess for me, I just need the history of, we had a fund ba- balance twenty-one, twenty-two, I mean, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and then how are those dollars spent? And then how are those dollars spent? Because I'm trying to figure out, are we basing the fund balance on what fund balance money was spent on? And I'm not sure that's a good way to do budgeting. And I get it, Ms. Howell, that, yeah, you need some rainy day funds. I understand that. But we also need to educate some kids in real time. So. If someone can help me, help us with that and provide that information, I think it'd be helpful. If you want to speak to it, Ms. Howell, that's fine. But I just think now we probably need something, for me, in writing, please.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly provide some information in writing around the history of the fund balance for the last several years. But just in general, you think about it like this, when you think about our funding sources that we have that helps to fund our budget. We have money comes from the state. Money comes from the county. We have local uh funding from the board, and then we have fund balance. And the sum of all those revenue sources helps to pay for our budget. So the fund balance is always a portion that helps to fund our budget, but is a small portion. Generally speaking, fifty-five million dollars or less. This year, we're at a hundred and twenty million dollars, and our fund balance this year is lower than it was last year. So it's not as if our fund balance is increasing every year. We are tapping into it and we're drawing down. Um, and the fund balance, the reserves, if you will, um, will be less after the impact of this year. And it's it was less this year than it was the year before. Um, so it is one of our funding sources that is always part of our budgeting process, and it helps to. Pay for, you know, everything that we have planned in our operating budget.
Yeah, I, and I understand that, honest to God, I do. I just wonder if the county council is penalizing us for that. That fund balance or the amount that's in it. And maybe we need to reduce it or something. I don't know that today. But I think if you provide the history, it will give me a sense. Of what happened over the years and why. Someone settled on a certain percentage or a certain amount of the budget that needed to be uh reserved in a reserve fund balance. That's all. So, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate this document that you showed us because I believe I can fill this out easily. I really do, uh, without help. So thank you so much. The drop-downs are great. Thank you.
Thank, thank you all so much, and thank you, Chief Howell, for your presentation and explaining that to us. Um, so we'll um note those action items around the fund balance. Um, and hopefully at our January meeting, we'll be able to ch- talk a bit more about that. I'd like to move on to uh Ms. Winston's presentation, if there are no other comments here regarding um the budget. We can go ahead to Ms. Winston now. Thank you.
Uh, uh, good evening. Um, thank you so much, um, um, Board Member Adam Stafford. Uh, Annie's, will you share my presentation or should I?
Would you be able to share due to my technical problems I'm having with my email?
Okay. Sure. Thank you. So my presentation for um this evening is for the uh first quarter report. Um, which is conducted for the period of July one, uh, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And uh internal audit has the uh reporting requirement as uh described in Ward Policy eighty-three, seventy-three. Where uh we are required to provide quarterly reports of our activities to the Board of Education. Um, this first quarterly report uh was issued to the Board and the Superintendent on November first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, so high-level details of that report includes um that there were ten uh audit reports issued. Which include five student activity fund audit reports. Four uh investigations and one operational audit. Uh, for that time period, there were also one hundred forty-eight pipeline reports um received and reviewed. And a total of nine hundred and nine thousand dollars in assets were subjected to uh audit um during that period. The operational audit that was issued was the grade change validity operations audit. And this um audit was conducted pursuant to the FY twenty-four audit plan. And also as a, as a COMAR um requirement. Um, that a grade change validity operational audit uh needed to be conducted for the uh audit period. July one, twenty twenty-two through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, administrative procedure fifty-one sixteen is the uh applicable grade um change policy. And so the uh, the audit was conducted to determine um compliance with that uh particular po- uh policy. Which requires that all grade change requests are are entered and processed in the grade. Using the grade change authorization form, PS one forty, uh, within the established grade change window uh. Uh, deadlines. During quarters uh one through three of our school year twenty twenty-three. There were a total of four thousand eight hundred seventy-five grade changes made. And our sample um included three hundred and ten of those grade changes that were made at sixty-six schools. Uh, our findings, um, the first finding was that there was, uh, we found inadequate documentation. Of grade changes in sixty-five percent of our audit sa- sample. Uh, management um has uh provided their response and they partially um concurred. Uh, with our recommendation for improvement. Uh, grade changes uh in school max were not correctly uh updated in four percent. Found in four percent of our sample, uh, management partially concurred with our recommendation. Uh, unrecorded grade manager and transcript script manager act. Actions were found in seven percent of our sample, uh, management concurred. Uh, delinquent grade change approval and entry in the grade change authorization forms. Was found in twenty-two percent of our sample, uh, management partially concurred. Uh, noncompliant with the grade appeals process was found in nine percent of the sample. Uh, management concurrent. Uh, staff training um is required for grade changes and grade appeals was found at uh fifty-five. Um, percent of the schools that we visited, um, management concurrent. And then finally, um, the reconciliation of the form PSS forty with the school max. Had not been performed at eighty-five percent of the schools um audited. Um, and management concurred uh with that finding and recommendation. Um, the final report, including uh management's responses, um, has been forwarded to the Chief Accountability Officer. Um, for um submission to MSD in compliance with the COMAR requirement by October one. Uh, there were four investigations that were uh completed. Um, the first was the Dwight D Eisenhower Middle School payroll. And this was an investigation of allegations of falsified time records and improper payroll. Um, the um allegations were partially substantiated. Um, the Martin Luther King Junior Mi- uh, Middle School Facilities Investigation. Involved uh reported allegations of unauthorized use of the school. Um, and violations of eight administrative procedure thirteen thirty after-school use of facilities. Um, the allegations here were partially substantiated. And uh Martin Luther King Junior Middle School Athletic Ticket Sales and Substitute Teaching. Um, this was an investigation of uh alleged uh. Uh, improper accounting for athletic uh ticket sale proceeds. And also uh complaints uh regarding a teacher's compensation for uh covering classroom activities. Um, the allegations were partially substantiated. And finally, the Potomac High School Cheer Program Investigation of sus- of suspected noncompliance. With uh fundraising and cash collecting procedures for the uh twenty twenty-three school year. Um, the allegations were substantiated. There were uh five student activity fund audits uh issued during the period, and they are listed here. And there were no identified um significant, um, significant um deficiencies with any of these uh um audits. Our hotline reporting of uh data is included here. Um, it is the o- organized by um the most frequent uh category. Uh, which is uh parent community, parent and community relations, um, followed by the school and office management. The artists that are planned for this current quarter, which is pretty much over. Uh, is uh first the red circled employee status follow-up. It's a current audit um that we are working on. Um, and this involves the um, uh, the benefit where uh employees are. Uh, who are involuntary transferred to a lower position on the scout salary scale. Uh, are allowed to have their uh current salary frozen or red circled for a three-year period. And uh, we uh had done a previous audit in FY two thousand eighteen. We're going to follow up on um the recommendations there as well as determine uh of the current status. Of uh this uh benefit in that how it's being administered. Our school emerg- emergency procedures, um, this is also a follow-up. This is was a prior twenty twenty-two audit, um, where there were some identified um um deficiencies. Re- regarding the development and maintenance of emergency plans at schools. Uh, bus prop- lot practices follow-up. This is the audit of uh the bus lot practices, top payroll practices. Um, um, that are um, uh, and and also um to follow up on um. Management responses to an FY two thousand eighteen audit. And uh, we have also had some related um in uh investigations in this area. A sure ID is the transportation driver's ID software solution. Um, uh, the audit here will review the application I C controls over that solution. Uh, assure ID actually has um been uh discontinued. So our audit was limited to looking at the controls. Around uh when that application was uh discontinued um and deter- determined. Um, that the old IDs were collected, uh, et cetera. Our data, and finally, we conducted some data analytics um for the um student activity fund audit action plan uh follow-up. And this is a review to determine that our FY twenty-three. Um, student activity fund audit findings had actually um been uh implemented. Whereas um management um provided responses. And that um concludes my um presentation.
Thank you so much. Um. I see one hand, I'll go ahead, Chair McInnes Murray, and then I have one question, then we'll close out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Winston for uh this presentation. My question is, we have seen a lot of money missing in our schools through fundraising. Who monitors that?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, did you say um uh missing money through fundraising?
Yes. With the, with the um investigations that you have done, even the ones that others share with us. It seems as though the management of fundraising of money. Seems to have something missing in the process. To ensure that. Bad things don't happen. So I'm trying to figure out who monitors that process? Is it the accountability folks? Uh, do they need to report to somebody or are people just have the freedom? To do whatever they want with this money that they are raising?
Now, thank you for the, the question. I think I I understand what you're asking. Um, at the school level, the monitoring of fundraising. Is supposed to be the responsibility of the principal as the fiduciary agent uh uh for the school. Um, there are specific policies around fundraising, um, requiring um that uh there is pre- a preapproval for fundraising. There is, there are also policies um requiring that funds are uh collected and remitted to the school. And uh not uh kept personally and uh, uh, in your personal bank account or anything. And uh, so those investigations where you have had seen. Or heard me come back and said that that did not happen is where we have employees that are not following um those policies.
Okay, so I guess my, my question is, because I've noticed i- in on other occasions, there are repeat findings. What are the consequences when there are findings? To, let's say, the, the principal, the folks in the building? I'm trying to figure out why they keep repeating this, why we can't get it right.
So when there are findings regarding missing funds, those uh, those. The results of those investigations are forwarded to um our Employee Labor Relations Office. Um, from there, it is considered a, a management um issue to determine what disciplinary action will happen. Uh, sometimes it involves restitution, sometimes it involves um some type of suspension, what have you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, once they fill out the form and let somebody know that they're doing some fundraising. There's no one external to that building that is monitoring that or even checks on it. Or do they, once they fill out this form, send it in? Is there a report that they have to provide to somebody that closes out? The funding, what they raised and what they did with the money? Is there any follow-through, a process?
And it, 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 there is a process, but it all happens within the school. So the process is before you uh decide that you want to do a, a fundraiser. Um, there is a fundraiser of authorization form that is to be completed and approved by the the principal. Uh, once that fundraiser is completed, there is a second form of the fundraiser completion form. Where you spell out, this is what I collected, these were expenses, these were the proceeds. And a- and again, that is also supposed to be uh on file and reviewed by the principal. But there is no outside monitoring of uh fundraisers.
Okay, well, maybe that is something that the board needs to think about. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And um, Ms. Winston, in just a scant search that I've just did on the internet. There seem to be a lot of district-level softwares that can support in school fundraising. Could you all look into that and kind of see what could be done on the software side? And perhaps if there's a singular site for school-level fundraising, then there can be a little bit more oversight. There seems to be a lot of uh software out there that can do that. How, what do you think about that?
Uh, I, I think that that's definitely something um that um I can um uh take back. To um our, um, so it's, it is the accounting office that um owns that process. So um, I'd be happy to um take that information and uh back to them and um, um, you know, I'd even um. Be happy to sit with them to try to um do that research.
Absolutely, and since we're a school district, I'm sure that there are some that we wouldn't have to pay fees on. Um, yeah, I think that's something to explore. Go ahead, board member Ralph.
Thank you uh for your presentation, Ms. Winston.
You're welcome.
And happy holidays. I um just wanted to uh kind of um a similar question to Chair McInnes Murray. What can we do? Um, I hear Board Member Adam Stafford uh about the software. But what are some of your recommendations to close the gap at the policy level? Um, and I know this isn't the policy me- Um and I know this isn't the policy meeting, but it's something to recommend. Um I, I know there's large room for error when we are dealing with cash. Uh when my children come home, you know, I'm, I'm the parent seat on the boards, I'm a talk in my universe. When my children come home for field trips or whatever, I go straight to my school books, because I know that is the organized system. And when you know better, you do better. I was that parent before. Okay, here goes twenty dollars. Go give it to your homeroom teacher. But now that I was educated and I know about our, my school books process, Jocelyn is no longer giving my child cash to take to school, right? So similarly, I just would like to understand, what are some recommendations that we could close the gap on this? It seems like the cash exchange is getting us in lots of sticky situations. And um I, 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 I would like to understand, has your, I know your, your audit central, but I would like to know, have we looked at a study to really look at the areas and the gaps and to make these recommendations? Because what I don't want is us to give criminals or, 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 or scisters or, or people, give them a pathway to continue um to do wrong and do harm to our students and their families. So I just want to know, how can we tighten up? What are those areas? And please make those recommendations. So I, I don't know, Chair Adams, if this is the question or a task, or I don't, I don't know. Maybe this is a rhetorical question, but I really would like to us to solve this, because ever since I've joined the board, every time we get a report from Ms. Winston, it's misappropriation, misappropriation. I don't want, I don't like seeing that.
Yeah, 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 you know, a- 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 and I can imagine, uh and, and often, um, um, Ms. Ralph, uh that these um fundraisers that we're hearing about, again, these are teachers um that kind of go rogue. They decide on their own to do a fundraiser, collect the money on their own, and they really are operating outside of the uh, the process. Um, you know, I, it, it off the top of my head, I think that and, and, and often the reason why it comes to me for investigation is finally someone is vigilant. And they're, and, and they decide something's not quite right here. Um why, why is, you know, why are we required to uh purchase an item and send it to someone's personal uh cash app? So um oftentimes, it's someone, they see something and they say something. And that's how it, it happened. Um you know, um, you know, my thoughts are around, um, you know, if we had more centralized or um centralized allowable authorized fundraising activities, uh instead of just giving schools just the autonomy to, to decide whatever type fundraiser um that they want to. Um maybe there could be more control around that, maybe um involving our procurement office. Um if, um, you know, I don't know, let's say you've, you have to bid to be, to become an authorized fundraising, and we have maybe ten, these are fundra- the fundraising vendors, and these are the only authorized fundraisers. You know, just the off the top of my head, those are just some of um, um the ways I think uh we might be able to control our fundraisers better, just system-wide.
Yep.
Board Member Adam Stafford, I'll, I'll, I don't have an ass today, but I will be following up with you offline to just uh further flush this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh my one question is around grade um entering and grade changing. We're moving to a new grading platform. If I remember correctly, Chief Zuckerman was talking about that. What are we using currently? And somebody else can jump in here if, um, we don't have the answer. Is it school? That's was it met, Power School? What, what are we using? I know that they said we're migrating out of that.
I, I can't remember the name of the new platform, but it's
It's called Synergy.
Synergy, okay. Will that have some controls on it to prevent some of the grade-changing challenges that we've had? Because if, if we don't know that yet, Ms. Winston, could you possibly connect with Mr. Zuckerman to? Because you are seeing the repeat instances that are happening with our current platform. And then maybe if you can just ask, you know, Mr. Zuckerman, if he can share what this new platform will do to prohibit that from happening going forward.
Absolutely. I think that's an excellent question.
Okay. All right. Well, um, I don't see any more hands. And again, I want to thank ev- everyone today for a great meeting. Um the follow-up items from our November fifteenth meeting are going to be posted on Board Docs. The first three sessions, um, um, budget work sessions will be held um in January. And I, I want to make sure I say the dates correctly, so just please look out for an email on those upcoming dates. Um I want to have, thank everyone again for a great meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second? I second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night and I enjoy your holiday season. Thank you again.
Thanks.